We are presently launched.
Welcome, everybody. I guess we can start. Welcome to the June 16th, 2020, Seid County Board of Freeholders meeting. Lou, can you start with the roll call, please?
Freeholders after. Baz, Bartlet.
Here.
Best. Duffy.
Here.
Lapore. Deputy Director James. Director Lazar.
Here.
And the announcement of the open public meeting law.
Take notice that the Seid County Board chose some freeholders on January 6th, 2020, adopted Resolution Number R-2020-0001, which calls for the location of the conference and regular meetings scheduled for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, at 5:30 PM and 6:00 PM, respectively. pursuant to the state emergency and the public health emergency declared by New Jersey Governor Philip Murphy, set forth in Executive Order 103, and further limitations on public gatherings set forth in Executive Order 104, the Board is canceling the conference agenda and shall hold the regular meeting at 6:00 PM with no members of the public physically present and authorized under NJSA 10:4-12A in accordance with Administrative Order Mer 20-01 issued by Seid County Administrator, closing the administration building to nonessential personnel and effective March 18th, 2020, at 8:30 AM. If a member of the public wishes to place a public comment on the record, please email public@seiccountyNJ.org, stating your name, address, and matter to be addressed by the Board no later than June 16th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. The clerk of the Board shall read the same into public record. Moreover, members of the Board may participate telephonically pursuant to the Board bylaws and compliance with NJSA 10:4-12-1 et cetera. Official action will be taken. This notice was published in the Bergen Record and the Herald News on June 10th.
Thank you. And the invocation. Dr. Gungill, you want to take that one?
Or I can just read the regular one, too.
Okay, he has it.
I have it this time, so. Everybody wants to stand. God, who provides for thy power, thy people by thy power and rules over them in love. Be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our freeholders in the county of Seid, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
And the pledge, flag of our country. I pledge allegiance. Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible. And can we have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have lost their lives in the United States Armed Forces? And for George Floyd and all those who have suffered the consequences of this terrible movement that's going on right now. Our hearts go out to everyone. Thank you. Okay, can I give you the minutes of May 19th, 2020?
Moved.
Roll call.
All right, it was moved by Freeholder Bartlet and seconded by Lou. Second. I'll second it. Freeholder after. Freeholders after. Bartlet. Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director, if we could just hold for one second, please.
My son had their graduation today. Probably good to see that picture.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
All right, Director.
I can't hear you, Lou.
We're getting the technical difficulty figured out, so you can proceed.
I was gonna actually ask Dr. Gungill if she would like to give her report at this point.
Sure. Micah?
I believe actually Micah's come up to Freeholder Best.
Yeah. Lou, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, so Dr. Gungill, would you like to do your?
Yes, I would.
Micah has to get back to his office, I think.
Yes, correct.
Oh, he does?
So, if you want, I could just, before she does her report, I could kind of update the Board on a few things that are going on, if you would allow me.
Absolutely.
First, a late starter that will be presented a little later in this meeting will be a resolution authorizing the county of Seid to turn $10 million over to the New Jersey EDA so that we can enhance the small business loans for businesses throughout the county who have suffered during this COVID crisis. I think it's gonna be a great program. I think it's a great thing that you guys are offering to small businesses. As many of you know, the EDA started their round two last week ago today, I believe, putting $50 million statewide. So I think our $10 million, which will be dedicated just to Seid County and administered by the EDA, will be of great help to many of the small businesses. A small business by the EDA is defined as less than 25 full-time employees and the maximum grant amount of any one loan is $10,000. So I believe County Council is going to present the late starter in a little bit.
Thank you.
So, secondly, our drive-through test site, which we started back in March of, March 25th of this year, we will be closing down this Saturday. It will be our last testing day, so we have Thursday and Saturday, and that'll be our last testing day for the drive-in. And we're able to do that plus of our mobile testing, which we have started last week. So we went to Wanaque on Wednesday of last week where we tested, where we tested 379, or 371, excuse me, residents. And on Friday, we were in Clifton and we tested 479 residents. And I'm sure Dr. Gungill is gonna talk a little bit more about that in her presentation. And then, as you know, we are also leading the charge with at-home testing, where we have had over 1,600, I believe, at my last count, and I didn't check today, over 1,600 of our residents who have requested, received, and have taken the at-home test, which has been very, very well received. Dr. Gungill and myself and Kelly in my office have had a few different conference calls, at least two with the state of New Jersey, who was very interested in the fact that Seid County has taken the lead on a program. As you all know, that we're the first public entity in the nation to offer at-home testing, and I think that's something that we're all very proud of. And we've also been asked if we would take a call with the state of New Mexico. They are also very interested in what we're doing here in Seid County. So between the mobile testing and the at-home testing, we believe that we can stop the drive-through testing. You know, we've had the food distributions. They have been going very, very well. Tomorrow, we'll be at Seid Valley High School, which kind of encompasses the three valley towns of Woodland Park, Little Falls, and Totowa. And our mobile testing site tomorrow is at Camp Hope up in West Milford. Actually, Kelly just texted me that we have 1,960 residents who have requested the at-home test.
Wow, that's hard.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's.
That's great.
Yeah, that is really good. So I don't want to prolong it at all, but those are a few of the important updates that I wanted freeholders to know and for any public who may be on this meeting as well to know. Thank you, Director. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Are we ready for you, Shirley?
Micah, are you ready?
There we go.
All right, next slide. That's just the cover page. All right, so today is 95 days since we had our first case in Seid County. And the first cases were found in Clifton and Patterson. So it's almost 100 days that we've been suffering here in Seid County. Next slide. Next slide, please. This is an overview of. Go back one. Go back one, please. Okay. So this is an overview of COVID-19, and I like to do global and bring it down to us. As of today, we have a total of 16,664 cases and our deaths as of yesterday actually exceeded 1,000. So, I mean, the numbers are increasing to an extent, but we have been able to. In other words, we're not getting exponential cases every day. So it's a good thing for us. And when you compare Seid County and New Jersey with the rest of the country, we're in a very good place. Next slide, please. In New Jersey, these are the top five impacted counties. We are number four by cases. As you see, Bergen, Hudson, and Essex have exceeded us. But interestingly enough, even though we're that many cases, when it comes to fatalities, we are still lower. We are not in the top five. Next slide, please. This slide represents the communicable disease registry cases of negative and positive. And Mr. De Nova usually sends that to you every day in a spreadsheet, but this is what it looks like on a pie chart. As you can see, Patterson has 41% of the cases that are in CDRSS and also a tremendous number of also test negative. So the testing is, as the testing has increased, not just our testing, but other testing sites within the county, we're seeing more and more negatives, which would indicate that we have actually identified as many symptomatic people as possible, pulled them out of the community into quarantine, and they were able to be treated. So as long as we continue to do that, our negative cases are going to continue to increase. Next slide, please. All right, the following slides represent data from the municipalities from whom I receive daily information. It will not include Hawthorne, North Haildon, Patterson, Totowa, and Prospect Park. Next slide. All right, so from those 11 municipalities, this is what it looks like in terms of cases. By gender, we're seeing that female. For the first time since we started looking at the data, and we actually look at it every two weeks, we're seeing that females have outpaced men. It's a small percentage, but we have never seen that since the beginning of this outbreak. And the age group, 18 to 49, I mean, we put it together because there were so many of them. We're seeing that we're actually reaching that population. And you might wonder why is it important to get to this young adult population? And the reason is that many of them, when they do have COVID-19, they have mild symptoms or they're asymptomatic. So it's really important that we reach them and are able to identify cases so that they can be treated. Next slide, please.
Dr. Gungill, could I just interrupt one moment? So of the towns that you're not getting numbers from every day, is it the municipality that's not giving us the number? Or is it the Health Department that represents those towns that are not giving us?
The latter, sir. The Health Department that represents those towns do not provide the data.
All right, so I just, I knew the answer to the question, but I wanted to be clear. So it's not Totowa, North Haildon, Hawthorne that are not giving us the numbers. It's Patterson who's representing those towns or is contracted with those towns for health services.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All right. All right, so deaths by municipalities. Next slide. Okay, so this is the total deaths again for the 11 municipalities that report data to me every day. And you could see from this slide that Seid and Clifton, again, are the ones that are represented most, 31%, followed by, I'm sorry, Seid 31%, Wayne 25%, and Clifton 21%. But we also, I want you to understand also that Wayne has a preponderance of the long-term care facilities in Seid County. And so it skews their data because so many of the residents of long-term care facilities have been cases and many of them have died. As a matter of fact, I believe the number is about three to one. Three residents of long-term care in Wayne who were COVID-positive have died in comparison to one resident, one community resident. So it really makes the data for Wayne very interesting to look at because when you break it down, it does not have the same meaning as the data from Clifton and the data from Seid. For example, in Seid, there are two long-term care facilities. There were deaths there, but in comparison, the deaths in those long-term care did not equate a high percentage as it did in, as it does in Wayne. Similarly, in Clifton, there's one long-term care and their deaths, again, does not equate, does not have as much weight as the deaths of residents in long-term care facilities in Wayne.
Dr. Gungill, I want to be sure I understood that. So you're saying that 75% of Wayne's cases are people who are in long-term care facilities here?
Wayne deaths, because this is death.
How about of cases?
No, cases? No, there are more. I don't remember the exact number, but they have many cases in Wayne, and I don't think it's the same percentage. But when it comes to death, the death is outstanding. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I want to say there are twelve long-term care and maybe all twelve of them had outbreaks. But, you know, it's a startling number because when we discuss it, and I believe the number, let's say it's 130 is the number, and there will be like seven for community and all the rest for long-term care. So it's very startling. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so this slide represents deaths by gender and age group in Seid County. And here you can see that male, about 58%, about 60% of the deaths by gender in Seid County, of the towns that I have data for, is that much more than the percentage of female. Deaths by age groups, and we've been seeing this over and over with the age groups. Obviously, the older age groups are incidents of death. But the ones that I'm really interested in are, that is unusual, is 40 to 49 and 50 to 59% because those are pretty high for death by, you know, by this cause, this type of outbreak. Next slide, please. All right, so this slide, Mr. De Nova touched on this already. This has to do with our COVID-19 testing. And we are one of the counties that have really looked at different innovative ways to provide testing to our residents. In many of my calls with my counterparts, whether they are county health officers or health officers through the 100 health departments in the state, we always stand out because of what we're doing. As you know, the at-home testing is innovative. It's 21st century. And for me, as an epidemiologist, it really reaches people in a place where we would not normally reach them. So everyone is not comfortable getting into their cars and driving to a testing site. Some people don't have a car to come to a testing site. They may feel, you know, uncomfortable. They don't know what to expect. But in the privacy of their own homes, as long as their computer comfortable enough, they can do the testing at their, you know, at their homes, their own pace. The only person who will know is the healthcare worker who is observing them, creating the saliva. And so I think that that's really, you know, a wonderful way for us to reach our residents, those that we may not have reached otherwise. Obviously, for people in more rural areas, for people who may not be able to move around as much, it is an option that none of the other counties or municipalities have done. Mr. De Nova mentioned about New Mexico and the state calls. I've also received calls and emails from Burlington County, from Essex County, from Union County, as they try to understand how they could implement this innovative way of testing. So I'm really proud to be a part of this program here in Seid County. And again, you know, today was day 47, I believe, of testing at William Patterson. And it's a bittersweet time for us because we've spent so many hours from planning it to executing it to thinking about it when we're not there to always trying to find the resources and the right people to conduct our testing. You know, it indicates that we have been successful in other things, but it also, there is a sadness that I think we all feel because it's almost the end of an era. But I'm saying that, but I also want you to be aware that because this pandemic is not over, will not be over overnight, we have to be, I certainly have to be prepared for a second wave, whatever that will be, that is a regular occurrence within an outbreak. So it's unexpected. We have data to support the trend that happens in pandemics. But we also know that if we do, if a vaccine is approved, I know I'll have to ramp up our abilities to do mass vaccinations. So it's just another piece, you know, forward-thinking and strategic planning for what's coming next. And our mobile testing, as Mr. De Nova mentioned, tomorrow will be your third day. It's been very well received. Again, it's an opportunity to be in the community, not just being at one location, but actually bringing our resources into the community where it is needed. And it offers an option to people who may not have transportation, who, even if they have it, you know, at our height, the wait was, you know, could be long. This is a lot faster. It's less invasive, and it's right in the community. And I just think, I just feel very good about the things that we're doing. I believe that it really demonstrates, you know, our commitment to our community. And I really hope that people could see that Seid County goes above and beyond to reach its residents.
And I just would add to the testing as well that the at-home and the mobile testing, the results have been coming in the next day. So within 24 hours, people have the results. The labs throughout the state, not just by a reference that we are using, have really been kind of slammed of late. And the results are taking now close to seven or eight days to get results. So the other benefit of the at-home and the mobile testing is Rutgers has the ability to do 80,000 tests a day. And the results, as I said, in Wanaque, people were calling me the next morning. They got tested 2:00 in the afternoon, and by 8:00 in the morning, when they checked the emails, they had already gotten the results. So certainly another benefit of both of those programs.
Yes, and as you can see with the drive-through testing, we've tested 14,000 people. That's quite amazing. And again, I'm really proud to be a part of this, or at-home testing. As Kelly has said, 1,900 people have registered. I mean, that's really groundbreaking. And in two days of mobile testing, we were already close to 1,000 people tested. So now, if we continue with this trajectory, we'll be testing a huge percentage of our residents, and it's a good thing. Next slide, please. All right, so this is just a reminder. This gets lost in our messages, and I just want to put that out there today because as the governor continues to open up the state, we have to still remember that all the things that have worked for us, we still need to continue to do. And I hope that there are people who are listening at home. I just want to remind them that we can be safe. We can protect ourselves if we use the science and the data that has brought us this far. So again, you know, stay connected to your neighbors. Check in on the ones who, you know, who can't come out, a lot of the seniors, for example. Give them a call. Make sure that they're okay if they need something. Drop it off for them, you know, whatever it is. And keep yourself, keep your distance, use your face coverings. Never forget, you know, the hand washing piece. People forget that piece because they use the hand sanitizer, but there's nothing that beats water and soap. So just do that and come to our sites and get tested. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Gungill.
That's it, Micah. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Dr. Gungill, I have one question, and I just need to clarify this. We don't get the reports from Hawthorne, North Haildon because they contract through the city of Patterson, correct?
Correct, ma'am.
And so the city of Patterson chooses not to share their information with us? And is there someplace else to get that type, kind of information if they're not going to share it with us?
So I had two slides on the screen that shows the information that I can access on the. But the local information, the best place to receive that information is from the boots on the ground. So the information that I put on the slides from the other health officers, that information is provided to me every day by nurses and the health officers and the health educators who are actually investigating those cases or who are actually doing contact tracing. So they, every day I get an email or if it's a day when it's a conference call, they would provide that information to me. Sometimes there are changes, there are, you know, adjustments. I get it straight from them.
Okay, all right, I just want to understand. Anyone else have a question for Dr. Gungill?
Yeah, through you, Director, I actually have a follow-up question on yours, which I thought was a really important one. So what you're saying, Dr. Gungill, is that we're able to figure out how many cases those five towns Patterson handles health services for have collectively, basically by taking a county level and subtracting the 11 towns that we know? Is that as close as we can come to understanding what's going on COVID-wise in, you know, towns as different as Patterson and Little Falls?
So the stage registry is where all of the labs that are signed up to the registry submit the data. And that data changes. The other health officers, when they go into the system, they can locate, they can get their data. They have access to their own data. So they can get that raw data, and then they start working on the data, and they could get that to me. It's a lot of information, a lot of numbers. The, the Patterson Health Department is swamped. It is overwhelming the amount of cases that they have. And so I think it's, it's a lot and it may not be easy for them to provide the information. So consequently, I don't have it. I can run overall numbers and I do that every day. So I could provide you with numbers that I can get off the site. But as we all know, those numbers sometimes can be vastly different from what the boots on the ground are using, are, are, are seeing. But I don't have that information because I, it's not provided to me.
So Charlene, let me hop in here. So for example, Patterson, I think on their website says that their case count is about sixty-four hundred. And yet, we're reporting from the state says that Patterson has seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So there's a, a huge difference there, you know, over a thousand cases. When I talked to Paul Persar, the health officer of Patterson, he did say that they were scrubbing the data and there were some duplicates in there and some other people wrongfully associated with Patterson and they had lived in another municipality. And, and I get that that could happen, but the number just seems to be like way, way off to the point where I'm, I'm no longer comfortable reporting our numbers because of the difference. Again, I, I think it's close to about fifteen hundred difference now between the numbers that Patterson is reporting versus the number that we're reporting, that we get from the state, by the way. So this is the New Jersey Department of Health statistics report that they put out daily that, that we share on our website. Does that make sense that it would be that many, like fifteen hundred cases?
So I, I know you and I have, that's, so you and I have talked about that. And, you know, I understand what Dr. Persad is saying. And I know that, that even my staff are, are scrubbing data and we're seeing changes as well. I don't know why it does not reflect those changes in the state system. You know, Paul and I have talked about it several times. I don't, I don't know, I, I really can't speak to why that is. When I, when I run the reports, I run into the same parameters that I do all the other municipalities, where there might be differences of, you know, seven, eight, twelve cases, but certainly not fifteen hundred. So, so that's really, really one of the reasons why when this began, we began with an ask. We were told by the department, the State Department of Health that, that we as county links agencies, county health departments, that we are to reach out to our locals and, you know, request the data on a daily basis. So we've been doing that with, with all the health officers and they provide it for their different municipalities. I don't, you know, that's, that's the best answer I can give you freeholder that, that I don't know why the numbers are not, you know, the way they should be. I would love to have similar numbers, but I can also say that with, you know, fifteen hundred is a lot. You know, I, I can't even explain that, but I can explain some smaller aberrations. And that would be that the CDRSS is an interactive, real-time product. So I can be, I can run a report right now at six forty-five PM and I can get a different number than you who are running it at six forty-five PM, but point zero, you know, another 10 seconds. Because during that time, another case could be reported. So you can have a different number than I can, right? But that being said, you know, if, if a number is being, if the numbers are being scrubbed, then they would have to be changed within the system and perhaps they're not.
Okay. Uh, last question. In terms of reported fatalities, I've noticed that we've kind of plateaued at the fatalities. We're not hearing as many fatalities. But I, I also am aware that on the death certificates, they're not explicitly writing down whether or not someone passed of COVID. It's, it's not the first, you know, indicator of death. It was either secondary or, or a third cause of death. And because it's not the first cause of death, it's not written on the death certificate. And municipalities are reporting fatalities based off of what is written on a death certificate. So if COVID is not explicitly written on a death certificate, then it's not counted towards the total numbers. And I think that that practice has changed from originally what we were doing. And it's kind of skewing the numbers to, to make people think that, you know, no one is dying from COVID anymore, when I know for a fact people are still dying from COVID. Do you have any clarification on how deaths are being recorded for COVIDs or fatalities?
Okay. So I'll tell you what I know. It may be in some cases, perhaps not in all cases. So on the death certificate, as you know, there is the cause of death. And there are, there could be several underlying, you know, causes. So it could be diabetes, it could be heart disease, it could be COVID-19, whatever it is. So I believe that, that what my counterparts are doing in, in municipalities in Passaic County and we, we have the, we have the, the ability because many of my counterparts are also registrars in their municipalities. So what we do is we cross-reference our data to see if we could get a more, a more true data, a more true number. So somebody could die of asphyxiation, right? Because they're breathing issues. So that might be the cause of death. But then the underlying reason could be COVID-19. But they can only say COVID-19 if that person was tested or if that person had symptoms consistent with COVID-19 and the pronouncer of the death was able, you know, was able to put that in. So I completely agree with you that those are some aberrations in data that you'll see in, in almost any type of, of death that is announced. For example, you know, I, I mentioned diabetes a lot. A lot of times diabetics die of heart disease. But their underlying reason is diabetes. So that data is collected twofold, right? Cause of death and underlying causes. So, so when you look at the, you know, ten leading causes of death, for example, you see diabetes as number seven or eight in the country. And that's because of, of that underlying piece. You'll never see somebody died of diabetes. It's, it's not, it's almost never a cause of death. It's something else. So you're seeing similar things with COVID-19. The only thing I could tell you is as long as there is consistency, then we could use that information going forward. If there are inconsistencies in how the data collected, over time, when this is done, you know, they'll be able to continue to scrub the data as they do cross-referencing and checking. You know, in about a year and a half after this is over, we'll get the truest numbers that we could get. But we're not going to get it in the heat of the moment because there are just too many moving parts of the data.
Okay.
Makes sense? Okay.
I'll talk to you next year.
Okay.
That's it. No more questions?
That's all, Director.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gungill. That was a great report.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So we'll move on to freeholder reports and I guess I'll start. As Director of the Passaic County Freeholder Board, I'd like to address the very tragic deaths of George Floyd and the image of our nation's continuing fight against racism. Collectively, the Board of Chosen Freeholders would like to send thoughts and prayers out to Mr. Floyd's family and all the communities impacted by this very tragic incident. There's absolutely no place in our society for any unnecessary and preventable death at the hands of someone entrusted to protect and serve others. The officer responsible for the death of Mr. Floyd has been indicted and he needs to face justice and pay for his actions. This is a feeling of a vast majority of our population and it is shared among my colleagues on this freeholder board. We know that Passaic County is a diverse community that understands and appreciates our differences. We have learned to successfully live together with an understanding that our diversity is our strength. With that being said, we share our community's outrage and frustration over the killing of George Floyd. And we are supportive of peaceful protests throughout the municipalities that make up our diverse county. As a board, we have oversight of the budget for the Passaic County Sheriff's Office. We regularly meet with Sheriff Richard Bernick to address resident concerns and we will continue to support updated training for our sheriff's officers. We remain confident in Sheriff Bernick's leadership and that of his department. I have been supportive of training for our sheriff's officers on diversity, use of force and building community trust. Unfortunately, community trust is built very slowly and the killing of Mr. Floyd has stolen all the progress that we have made over the years. These are already unprecedented times for our county government with the global pandemic forcing government closings and transitioning our workforce to working remotely. This is admittedly another difficult issue. And combined with our efforts protecting all of us from the spread of COVID-19, we all need to remain flexible and supportive. In these difficult times, we ask you, our community, to please come together and be an example of unity and diversity for other communities throughout our nation. Know that the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders and the entire county of Passaic supports you. And we will do everything we can to make sure that we move past this in a peaceful way. Thank you. Freeholder, Director?
Well, thank you so much, Director, for, for your comments and speaking on our behalf. I, I think when it comes to this issue of police brutality and the issue of equal, equal justice under the law for people regardless of race and the fact that black men and women in this country face a greater burden, regardless of their economic status, regardless of what privilege they may or may not have. The fact is, is that there's not an equal set of justice, unfortunately, or equal set of circumstances. And it's a difficult thing and it's, it's a multi-layered thing and it's not the same in every town or every place. And it's not the same for every police department. And I, I don't think we can speak for every police officer in terms of how they carry out their duty or what, what biases they may or may not have, just as all of us as public officials carry biases and how we carry out our duties. I think it's a case-by-case basis. And so that makes it very difficult for us. Obviously, I live in the city of Patterson. Patterson is our, is our, is, is the seat of our county. And so is the city of Passaic and, and these urban communities in Clifton and others. These urban communities face a different burden than others. And so like I said, it's, it's, it's different from community to community, even within, within municipalities. It's very different from place to place. But it is very clear that it's not an equal system of justice for all of us and that people who are African-American face a, a heavier burden than the rest of us. And so I think it's incumbent upon all of us to have that conversation, to see what steps we can take. And it's not something that's going to happen easily or quickly. So thank you, Director, for starting that conversation. I hope we, we continue that and have more people brought on, both inside Passaic County and outside Passaic, to continue that conversation and continue what ideas and thoughts there might be to, to help strengthen our, our, you know, our, our justice system within Passaic County. I also just want to, on a different note, I just want to congratulate PCTI, the class of 2020. They are having their virtual graduation now as we speak, I believe. And they, I think we all joining, congratulating all them. I know it's a very strange time to be a graduate and I, I feel badly that they aren't getting the celebration that they deserve. But I hope it won't stop them from enjoying their accomplishment. Knowing that, you know, one day to celebrate a graduation is not, is not nearly the same as the accomplishment for which they have done and which will carry them forward. And I, I wished them the best of luck in the future. And I'm grateful and proud that we were able to give that many students through Passaic County a quality education. And I think they're going to have bright, bright futures from here on out. So thank you, Director.
Thank you. Freeholder Bartlett?
Thank you very much, Director. And, and thanks for starting the conversation off with that conversation about George Floyd and about what we're seeing right now. I was proud to join with my family and attend the Wayne Black Lives Matter rally and march last weekend. I'm very encouraged to see people in all kinds of communities like Wayne, where I live, like Totowa and Little Falls, where there was a, a rally and a march last Friday. Also recognizing the, the deep and difficult truths behind what we saw on camera with George Floyd and the fact that so often that happens and it's not on camera and we don't know. And the privilege that we have because of our race is not to know unless we take it upon ourselves and our responsibility for our fellow Americans to, to learn and to come to understand. And also to shed that tendency that some people have to become defensive about their privilege and to acknowledge the privilege isn't just something that one has as an individual, but that's part of a structure, a legal structure, an historic structure that provides advantages to some of us that others don't enjoy. And that the challenge is not about feeling guilty, but about taking responsibility and about saying, where do we go from here now that we see what we probably should have seen long before that? So I'm pleased to see so many people in so many communities coming together in person, coming together online. When they do come together in person, wearing masks and staying six feet apart. And it's, I, I feel a sense of hope in spite of all the other stuff that we have going on right now. And I, I'm pleased by that. I joined with Assad in congratulating the PCTI class of 2020, congratulating all the students at the STEM Academy who finished their exams today. And everybody across the county who's going to be celebrating graduations in the weeks ahead. Congratulations also to our friend and former running mate, Mayor Hector Laura, on the birth of his fifth son last week. And as the weather warms up and the flowers in my backyard start to bloom, I'm hopeful in spite of everything and look forward to a great summer for everyone.
Freeholder, Freeholder, best.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Freeholder Director, for, for those words. It means a lot from you as well as our colleagues. You know, since the video came out of George Floyd's death, I had a lot of friends call me, some not even friends, associates, and, and just reaching out and asking me, you know, how was, was I doing? Was I upset? Was I mad? Am I going to burn down the Wendy's or take over a police station or something like that? And, you know, am I mad? Am I upset? Of course I am. But unfortunately, I've been mad and upset for since I, I could think. I mean, you know, there's been countless African-American men and women who were killed by law enforcement officials, unarmed people. It's just recently where it started to be shown on video cameras and videotapes. And now everyone can see the same injustices that people like myself have to walk around with every single day. I'm glad that we have an awakening in society. It hurts me that a man had to die in such a horrific way in order for us to have this awakening. But it is important to be displayed so that everyone could, could have an understanding of what exactly is going on. Systemic racism in America was intentionally created. You know, if you go back to the founding of our country since before the Declaration of Independence, it was based off of a system of have and have-nots. And African-Americans and black people were the have-nots. And the country was built on the back of slavery and segregation and Jim Crow and redlining and all the other various things. And the same intentional effort that went into creating the system that we have today has to also be there to dismantle it. So the same effort and energy of and energy of hundreds of years to build this system, it's going to take hundreds of years to dismantle it, unfortunately. And we could start seeing some of those bricks of that foundation come down. I still think it's crazy that, you know, there was a debate of whether or not black lives matter. Some people were like, oh, well, black lives matter, all lives matter. All lives can't matter until black lives matter. Once black lives matter, then all lives can matter. And the fact that people can't even say that or couldn't before troubled me. And to see now everyone hopping on that bandwagon, again, it's encouraging, but I hope that is not hollow. I hope that is meaningful, and we as elected officials and we as people in government and in positions of authority and power have a responsibility to put those words, that spirit into action through meaningful legislation, through meaningful policies, procedures, ordinances, whatever we have the authority to do in order to create a system that is more balanced for all Americans, and in particular, for people who have suffered the most in that particular system. So again, I am encouraged about what I'm seeing in our country. I am extremely encouraged about what I'm seeing from my colleagues. Again, I think that we have one of the greatest boards ever. I'm so excited to be part of this team. And I know that when when one person speaks, we all speak in unison. So, Madam Director, thank you for those words. It's truly meaningful. This week, we're going to be celebrating Juneteenth on Friday, June 19th, is the celebration of Juneteenth. Juneteenth is a holiday in which we celebrate as the official ending of slavery. A lot of people don't know it, but that was the day when Confederate, I'm sorry, Union soldiers landed in Galveston, Texas on June 19th, 1865, and essentially said, oh, by the way, everybody, you're free now. And that goes down as our Independence Day. It's not July 4th, it's actually June 19th, where African-Americans celebrate our independence. So that being said, there's a proclamation or resolution as a late starter on the agenda in which Passaic County is going to recognize June 19th as an official holiday. Normally, we celebrate it with the African-American Heritage Parades in the city of Passaic and Patterson, but because of COVID-19, we're not going to be able to get on a march, we're not going to be able to get on a float and march through the city. But there are other celebrations that are occurring. So again, if you are participating in these celebrations, I'm going to ask that you be responsible in terms of social distancing, and I want to spread the love, but not spread the COVID. So we're able to come together as a family and yet not spread again this 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 pandemic any more than than it has, I think, would be would be great. So that concludes my remarks.
Freeholder Best. Freeholder Duffy?
Yes, ma'am, Director. Pleasure to be with you all again. Once again, I want to thank my colleagues, and especially you, Director, started this conversation, open dialogue. It is diverse times. And we've got to remember that our Sheriff's Department is one of the most diverse departments I've ever come across, of color, creed, and race. I'm proud to be on this team. It's it's diversity right on our board, and I think we all we all look for the same thing, you know, justice for all. And I think we've demonstrated that over the years. So that being said, I don't need to to reiterate what my colleagues and yourself have said. And I agree with 110% of all of it. But I have seven agendas, seven items on the agenda, hopefully, we're all going to support. I couldn't imagine you're not. Moving Passaic County forward, I look forward to the future, like we all do, get rid of this awful COVID-19. Especially want to shout out to our Health Department and to our Administrator from the top all the way down. We are on a team, and we should be very, and I know we are, very, very proud of not only ourselves, but each and every one of us. So thank you for listening to me. I'm down here holding the fort. I'll see you next week for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Freeholder. We're going to open up the public portion now. Just know that people will be typing in their questions via Facebook or however they do it. So we're going to give it a couple of extra minutes. But to start, can I have a motion to open up the public portion of the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call?
Motion made by Freeholder Duffy, seconded by Freeholder actor, and roll call, Freeholders actor?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Director Lazar?
Yes. Do we have any questions in yet?
Okay. For the record, for the, when I read the public public notice for this meeting, one of the one of the venues was mediums was through Passaic or public@passaiccountynj.org. There is no messages there. On the Cisco Webex events, there is no Q and A. On Facebook Live, there is several, just a couple comments. Amber Ugg, so good to hear all the details. Anne Schnackenberg, glad to see the county's testing outreach. She asked about Patterson and the other towns in reference to, but that was already discussed. That answer by the by Dr. Gungill. Rebecca Quinn, thank you for the clarification. Then you just had several people checking in, Carl Daggasino, Susan Wentz, Rebecca Quinn, and Nada Adella all checking in, but no, no questions.
Want to give it another minute?
I I'd seriously suggest that we do at least give it at least another minute, possibly two minutes there, please. The Facebook is is at least, at least a half a minute delayed. So I just want to make sure we get all the, any questions. Anne Schnackenberg is asking, will there will there be bigger signs signs about masks at county parks and enforcement? Also, and then Ivan Rodriguez question retirees are getting charged for health insurance because the county hasn't paid. Okay, Director, I think that's.
Move to clause, public portion?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Freeholder Best, seconded by Freeholder Duffy. Roll call, Freeholders actor?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Director Lazar?
Director, can I just make a request?
Sure.
Lou, Ivan Rodriguez on the on the on the board here seems to have a question about retirees and their health insurance. I'm not sure what what it has to do with us. But if we could follow up with her offline, try to get some information here, you know, it's a because of the format, it's very difficult to answer people's questions in real time. But if we could please just follow up with her to make sure that, you know, we're trying to get some information for her, if possible.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Freeholder, what what Ms. Rodriguez is asking. But certainly, if if she is listening and wants to email my office, A-Denova, D-E-N-O-V-A, at passaiccountynj.org, I'd be happy to look into the specific issue.
Thank you, Anthony. And Lou, if you if you want to just message her directly or whatever, just give her, you know, an email or something, that'd be great.
To to Anne Schnackenberg's question regarding signage in the parks.
Where's the roll call? Isn't that one more person?
No, we did. We did Director Lazar, right?
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Tony.
As far as signage, we are making signs. The big belly solar garbage cans that are throughout all of our park systems on the side have the ability to put posters. So we will be putting the face covering posters in all of the big bellies as well. So I think that should be helpful.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. Oh, wait, we close. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda and our county council, Matt Jordan, late starters, amendments?
Director, I have late starters and amendment. A-69 is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the New Jersey Economic Development Authority to grant funding received pursuant to the CARES Act for qualified small businesses in Passaic County. A-70, as mentioned by Freeholder Best, is a resolution recognizing Juneteenth in Passaic County as an annual celebration of African-American freedom and the abolition of slavery in the United States of America. And then there is one amendment to K-29 that I mentioned to the Freeholders earlier today, just adding a vendor and paragraph applies to purchasing. Lou, do we need to do anything for K-48? I think it was the cert was corrected.
The cert was corrected, but I think we should amend, we should amend it too, because because.
You know the total offhand that we need to amend it to?
Twenty-seven thousand zero eight four.
So then, just with K-48, we need to amend the certification to represent twenty-eight, twenty-seven thousand zero eight four dollars. There is no need for an executive session. Like I said, with the consent agenda, if anyone wants to vote on our resolution independently, just please make a motion through the Director to remove it so that we can have a separate roll call. That's all.
Have a motion to add A-69 and A-70 to the agenda and to amend K-29 and K-48.
So moved.
Second.
Wait, 29, yep, that was right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so then, motion was made by Freeholder Best, seconded by Freeholder After.
Correct. Correct on that?
Excuse me?
I was correct on that, right?
I seconded it, though.
No, Bartlet seconded it.
Just on the dais, Assad.
It doesn't matter. Personally, otherwise, it doesn't matter.
Freeholders actor?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Director Lazar?
Yes. Okay, have a motion to accept resolutions A-1 to A-70.
Make that motion.
Just for Director, matter of clarification, are you saying K as in?
Oh, did I say A?
Yes.
I'm sorry, K-1 to K-70.
Okay, Duffy made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Freeholder Best. Freeholders actor?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Director Lazar?
Yes. Okay. Could I have a motion to move the personnel agenda? You guys got to do it.
I'll move it.
Bartlet?
Second.
Motion made by Freeholder Bartlet, seconded by Freeholder Best. Freeholders actor?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Director Lazar?
Yes. Could I have a motion to move the bills list?
So moved.
Motion made by Freeholder Bartlet, seconded by Freeholder Best. Freeholders actor?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy? Yes.
Director Lazar?
Yes. And can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Duffy, seconded by Freeholder Best. Freeholders actor?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Director Lazar?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Be safe, stay healthy.
Good night.
Safe, Director.
I'll see you guys soon. Bye.
See you, guys. Take care.